Good evening. Tonight is the last of three nights reserved to hear from the community about the superintendent's recommended fiscal year 2024 capital budget and amendments to the FY 23 through 28 capital improvements program. We will hear both in person as well as video and audio testimonies, and tonight's hearing will be broadcast live on television and MCPS media. As always, board members are looking forward to hearing and considering your testimony. The order of speakers is listed on the agenda that is available on the board's website. Any written testimonies presented for tonight's hearing can be found on Board Docs. At this time, I'm going to ask my board members to introduce themselves, starting with Dr. Daka.
Good evening, and thank you for coming out.
Ms. Harris.
Good evening, everyone.
Ms. Mandrowski.
Hi, good evening.
Ms. Silvestri.
Good evening.
Ms. Evans.
Good to see you all. Good evening.
And we're also joined by Dr. McKnight and her staff.
Good evening, everyone.
Let's begin with our speakers who are here with us in person. When your name is called, please approach the podium and push the flat button below the microphone to turn it on and begin speaking. Please keep your mask on. Why do we have a mask mandated here?
I don't think that that's a thing.
I think this is an error, probably copied from something. Speak directly and clearly into the microphone. Thank you. Our first speaker for the evening is Samantha Ross. Press the button at the bottom. There you go.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. McKnight. My name is Sam Ross, and I'm a sophomore at Montgomery Blair High School. I'm here today, like everyone, to discuss the capital improvement plan. As you may know, this document is 288 pages. It's five chapters and covers all 210 schools and special facilities in MCPS. If you're like me and have read all 288 pages and 288 pages of the non amended CIP, as well as hundreds of pages of the last CIPs, you might hope to somewhat have a grasp of the projects in your community. Fortunately, I can't say that. Hine Branch Elementary School has been under consideration for a capital project since 2017. Feasibility study after feasibility study, giving funds for a project, taking them away, recommending funds, no funds, changing the type of project, and the three letters TBD have completely made the community confused. The same could be said for Eastern Middle, another aging building which needs renovation that has been TBD. These school communities, whose boundaries are complicated by the consortia, have been for the most part just left in the dark about recent developments. The MCPS page for PBS is just full of dead links, leaving much to be desired in terms of communication. Because if I, who's read all these documents, follows MCPS news very closely and lives in a tenant and had family attend PBS as some of these developments occurred, doesn't quite understand what's going on with the project, how am I community members? However, I'm very excited to see how the most unique building in MCPS changes with the latest project expansion. Second, I want to touch on my current school, Montgomery Blair. While classroom additions are needed, it is imperative for the future that that is not where solutions end. Our last relocatable classroom was placed in a teacher's parking lot, and who knows where more could go? We're surrounded by highways. They would certainly take more space from our parking or practice fields for our sports teams. And additionally, a school's overutilization doesn't end in the classroom. Hallways that are too cramped, bathrooms with lines out the door, lunch lines extending down the main hallway are all side effects of when you have 3,200 students and 300 staff in a building built for 2,600 students. And save for a major capital project, only boundary program, only boundary and program seat limits can help us in the short term. Finally, I want to talk about bathrooms. You might not have bathrooms in the forefront of your mind when we talk about our MCPS facilities, but trust me, many, many students do. Bathrooms in our school have plenty of issues, from too few sinks and toilets for students to use on when they're supposed to in passing periods and during lunch, to the small enclosed spaces being perfect for fights like the shooting at McGruder, use of illegal substances like vaping or smoking that occurs every single day in the bathrooms at my school, and the confusing school-to-school policies and lack of options for transgender and gender nonconforming students. While the ask for more private, single-user stalls, open sink spaces, and more bathrooms is a big ask, the stronger commitment to implement this change in every renovation, every new school, with consistent countywide policies between these schools as they come, would make all the difference for students. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm aware that my testimony is slightly off-cycle for the amendment year, but I only have two more cycles until I graduate, so I've got to make them count. I hope that I leave you with the issues that affect students such as myself in the forefront of your mind for next year, and that you have a great night.
Thank you. Our next student is Recha Trapathy. Please play the audio.
Hello. My name is Recha Trapathy, and I am here to testify on the topic of gender inclusive bathrooms. Access to bathrooms is a fundamental human right. Access to bathrooms matters, and so should the design. Increasingly rapidly, the insides and outsides of schools have been changing with time. So why haven't our bathrooms? Having a bathroom for males and a bathroom for females is incredibly limiting to non-binary and transgender students. In one study, a high rate of discrimination against transgender students was recorded. Seventy-eight percent of trans students reported being harassed at school, while 35% reported being physically assaulted. The question of which bathroom to go into also negatively impacted students' mental health, as well as physical and behavioral well-being. These statistics are telling us that students who identify as transgender are having issues with bathrooms. But I, as a student, urge you to look beyond the statistics, into the lives of transgender students and how this affects them. Every day, these students fear harassment due to physical appearance. The restroom is seen as anxiety-inducing and unwelcoming rather than relieving. Student activist Tara Crockett once said on restrooms, "It doesn't feel good." I'm reminded of the gender binary that enforces the erasure of me. Activist and writer Jacob Tobia once said, "If I choose the women's restroom, I risk fake facing panicked women who take one look at my facial hair and assume that I'm a predator. If I choose the men's restroom, I risk facing transphobic men who, with one glance at my dangling earrings, begin hurling slurs or throwing punches." From impacts on physical to behavioral to mental health, it is obvious that transgender students should have the right to a bathroom free of complications due to gender identity in every school. I hope you consider my testimony. Thank you.
Next is Laine Horn-Fek.
Is it on now? Good evening, Madam President, board members, Dr. McKnight, and all of the MCPS staff and VOA members that are here and staff members here today. First and foremost, thank you for all that you do for our children, for our community. It's truly appreciated. Thank you also for hearing this testimony tonight on behalf of Gaithersburg Middle School. I am the current PTA president, and I've had the honor of serving a community that is very diverse, that has fantastic, amazing students, amazing educators, and amazing parents. But it has become apparent to our community and our educators that we are not receiving equitable fundraising, funding, or program design supporting GMS, our facility, or our community. For background, GMS has almost 900 students comprised of more than 80% students from racially and ethically diverse backgrounds. Over 56% are receiving free and reduced meals, and that's only those that have actually applied. We have 250 students who are English as a second language or emergent multilingual learners, and we have 200 special education students in our community. In short, Gaithersburg Middle School has significant needs. On top of those demographics, our school was built in 1960. That means our building is over 60 years old. So to the extent there is going to be a feasibility study, I am hoping that our community and our PTA will be allowed to participate in that process. But with regard to the physical structure and the building systems of GMS, we are in dire need of repairs and upgrades. We need a new HVAC system now. Our heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system has been having problems and being patched for multiple years. We have been making this request since 2016. Our children cannot wait any longer. The building is uncomfortable, and especially during these COVID times. I'd like to say we're past them, but we're not. We keep getting it, and it keeps coming back. We need to ensure the comfort and safety of our children now. We understand that ESTER funds are available in this last year that they are available, and we're hoping that GMS can be a recipient of those funds for HVAC system. We also need, as I mentioned on Saturday, a completely new sound and lighting system in our auditorium. GMS offered a new drama and dance elective with a sound and lighting system that is so old, it doesn't work at all. We hosted a very robust international night this spring 2022 with at least 200 students and parents involved, but no one could really see or hear the performance. So this "non-working stage supports," and I put that in air quotes, all of our choral and band performances, our school plays, our general events, as well as this new elective. But our system isn't working. So we do believe that GMS should be given equitable access to funding that ensures a robust performing arts curriculum. It is clear to the families and educators at GMS that there is a lack of equitable funding for us, for fundraising and program design. We are just asking for equitable and deliberate work to happen for GMS and its community. Now, we'll be back in January 2023 regarding operating funds, and I mentioned that as well on Saturday. But I'm asking, in light of our FARMs, EML, and our special education rates, that would you please consider allocating additional funds to schools such as GMS that has such high FARMs rates? We are really incapable of fundraising money through our families and our community. We really need more funding from the system. I'm almost done. Being rich in diversity on so many levels, we have a lot of opportunity, but we have a lot of room to grow. And just to say it more directly, we are a school that is majority black and brown. And yes, we have many families that have economic needs. We also have nearly 50% of our EML learners and special education students. So 50% of our students are either emergent multilingual learners or special education. Think about that. 50% of our student population. So it does not go unnoticed that our school is not currently receiving the equitable funding, fundraising, and program design that we truly need and deserve, and specifically addressed in the anti-racist system audit written by Mid-Atlantic Equity Consortium. Please put a spotlight on GMS. As a community, we deeply value our students and staff and want them to have access to a building that supports our programs and, at bare minimum, has a functioning HVAC system. Please move GMS to the top of the CIP list and approve our requests for the CIP and ESTER funds. Thank you very much for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next is Link Hoeng.
Good evening, board members and Dr. McKnight. Thank you for listening to us tonight. My name is Link Hoeng with the Fair Access Committee for the Western County, and I have two points tonight I want to raise with you. But I want to start by, again, thanking you for all you've done to rebuild and reconstruct Poolsville High School. It is very much appreciated by our community. As a small community, as you know, Poolsville only has about 5,700 people. The school really is central to our community, and we're in a vast area of rural areas. So it's really important that we have a school that is up to date, and I really appreciate what you've done. First, as you know, we've made a strong case, I think, that the current size of the existing main gym at PHS is much smaller than any other high school in the county. Our sports program, as you probably have read recently, is really strong, and we have a great and wonderful athletic staff. Practice, however, is key to success and to a good sports program. Believe me, given how poor an athlete I was, practice would not have helped one bit. But we have a good program, and we have some students who would benefit by practice and making our program even stronger. Under the new design for the school, the existing cafeteria is being eliminated, and that's where practice today has been held, extra practices, for example, the wrestling team. We have no space in the new school's design for a wrestling room, which most other schools have, and the current revised plans for the gym, while expanding it, do not allow for safe practice space for two teams at once. Again, this is something that most high schools have. We need at least the addition of a full-size wrestling room to the current revised gym plans that we have seen. I'm grateful that the superintendent asked us to work with their team on revisions to the plan for the gym, and we did submit some ideas about a couple of months ago. As yet, we have not received any revised plans, and so I'm just letting you know tonight that we're still not quite there yet. But again, I appreciate the outreach from the superintendent. The second issue has to do with the wellness centers. As you know, the Montgomery County Council recently passed three special appropriations to expand wellness programs to all public schools in Montgomery County. We were a part of a coalition that supported this movement. Fair Access, in fact, has been behind this approach since 2018. And in fact, in the white paper that we started our whole effort with, we actually included that as one of the recommendations in our initial paper. Given how far our school is from most county and private mental health and medical services, we've always believed that a wellness center is vital to our school. It is especially so, and all of you know this, after the pandemic, but even before then, there was evidence that our students were struggling in mental health. At this juncture, it's our understanding that a wellness center is currently not included in the PHS modernization plans. We believe that it's just common sense and financially responsible, frankly, to include a special appropriation to get a wellness center funded and added to the new high school reconstruction project while shovels are in the ground and the current modernization process is going forward. When Poolsville held its groundbreaking ceremony a few months ago, and I'm so glad to see many of you here who were there that day, several council members, including Will Jawando, Andrew Fritzen, and Gabe Albernaz, referenced the idea of including a wellness center in the school as it's being built. We believe there will be support for this initiative in the council. Thank you again for all of you do for our students and for your attention to these matters.
Thank you. Next is Jennifer Hardesty. Please play the video.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Hardesty, and I am the PTA president for Twinbrook Elementary School. Thank you for allowing me to testify. I am testifying today regarding Twinbrook's inclusion in the 2024 budget for feasibility study. We are very happy that Twinbrook has been approved for this study. However, we were previously approved for a revitalization expansion project that was scheduled to be possibly completed by 2024. Then by 2019, Twinbrook was no longer on the list for revitalization due to budget and the switch to the KFI to determine eligibility. We have had several improvements over the years, including a new HVAC system, and we are currently scheduled to have a roof replacement. All of the improvements have helped and are greatly appreciated. However, there are still many things that need repair or improvement, and as the school continues to age, new problems continue to arise. One of the things that we ask for improvement on is the staff lounge. It is outdated, and the staff currently sits on donated lawn chairs. The staff morale would be lifted to have a comfortable place to relax. Also, the two main entrances to the school are plain compared to other MCPS schools and could use some brightening to make the entrances more welcoming. Also, the parking lot in the front and back of the school, as well as the bus driveway, has many potholes and deteriorated pavement, as you can see in these photos. There are also still plumbing issues, and now there are also electrical issues. Also, the school is not ADA compliant in many areas, as shown by the 2018 ADA Title II assessment. In order to accommodate a student in a wheelchair, entire grades have had to move classrooms to allow for wheelchair access. We want Twinbrook to be accommodating to everyone. One major concern is that there is no sprinkler system, which is a major safety concern. Also, something that is another safety concern is that the floor plan has several hiding spots. We have a great security system, but if someone should be able to get in the building, they could go undetected until it is too late. This is something that could be addressed with a new school. It is great that we are now included among the schools for the feasibility study, but since this is our second time going through the process, I hope and encourage the board to keep Twinbrook in mind for revitalization. We are a Title I school and also community school, so we are a vital part of the community. Twinbrook has also been considered for the Linkages to Learning Program, but one factor is that there is a lack of space to accommodate the program. Expanding the school would allow for the program to come to Twinbrook, and this would further help our students and community. It would greatly benefit the entire Twinbrook community to have a safe, secure, comfortable, and attractive school. We look forward to the results of the feasibility study, and we look forward to further improvements for the school. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll take questions from my board members. Please turn your light on. Does anybody have any? Ms. Harris?
Yeah, just a couple of quick follow-ups. The parking lot, plumbing, electrical issues referenced at Twinbrook, are those all on our radar?
Yes, and for the parking lot, we do have teams that are completed the design and prepared to do the work this coming summer. In terms of electrical and some of those other elements, you know, we are aware of some minor challenges that obviously are routine maintenance orders, but we'll do a more in-depth dive to make sure we have everything on our radar that was testified tonight.
And just another question. So some of the things that were testified to, the ADA issues and the safety issues, the lack of a sprinkler system. When we look at the KFI, and you know, every school is evaluated on the same set of criteria, I thought I was remembering that safety issues kind of gave a school a bump, and it would seem like a no sprinkler system would be one of those safety issues?
So safety and security is viewed upon a little differently than what would be considered a sprinkler system. Sprinkler certainly is part of a life safety system, but certainly one that we look at more from an infrastructure standpoint rather than the safety/security aspect. But the reason Twinbrook is part of the feasibility study and just one of 12 schools is that it does, you know, sort of rank high in terms of some of the challenges identified during KFI. So the schools that are part of that grouping are ones that had concerns, significant concerns, that we felt may be best addressed through some form of a major capital project. So when we go out to these 12 schools to do that further review, certainly report back to the board our findings and the potential options, whether that be renovation, new builds, you know, renovations and additions, those types of concepts to solve, you know, the variety of challenges identified, including ADA, safety/security, and infrastructure.
Thank you. And I do appreciate Ms. Hardesty keeping the issue of a Linkages to Learning Program at that school on the simmer, because I know the advocates and the allies have been working with MCPS and HHS on that request for at least five years. So thank you.
Ms. Mandrowski.
Yeah, thanks, everyone, for their testimonies. One quick general question. I thought that all new construction, let me think how to want to say this. I thought all of our high schools were to have a wellness center at some point, and I just thought that I understood that all new construction for high schools would include that, because that was what was agreed upon countywide, correct?
So yes, the county council did approve, obviously, the temporary measure of wellness spaces, but at the same time started to allocate funding for the build-out of wellness centers at all high schools. Again, this is not found in the MCPS capital improvements program. That is found in the Department of Health and Human Services capital improvement program. We do believe funding was identified. We are just waiting for the specific response from DHHS around which are the first schools that would be part of this wellness center construction. For schools like Poolsville, Crown, Woodward, we are master planning these spaces. Obviously, the design is also funded by DHHS, but we obviously are being very proactive in every one of these situations. So, for example, of Poolsville High School, you know, we have master planned the location. We're prepared to engage with the architects around, you know, fee services to complete the design, but we are waiting for that official notification of DHHS around which of those schools are their intended first schools to begin the construction, design and construction.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that we're letting people know that their advocacy is still needed at the county level, as well as with MCPS. Then my last point is, you know, I want to thank Gaithersburg Middle School's advocacy as well. It is something that we will obviously be talking a lot more about as the operating budget discussions come along. But I do hope that, because this is something we have been talking about, trying to support schools that aren't able to fundraise the way others are, and that's obviously a bigger issue, but I do hope that we can take a look at some of their needs, because I don't know where they fall in terms of any kind of real major renovations, but we do need to elevate. I mean, things like sound systems, those are things that frequently our PTAs help support getting replaced, and if you don't have a PTA that can do that, then we need to, so.
So yes, and we are supporting our schools. So we are evaluating a new sound system for Gaithersburg Middle. I would also point out, as part of the superintendent's, you know, recommendation of increasing HVAC budget, it also includes Gaithersburg Middle with matching state aid for new HVAC systems. So yes, these are high priorities for us, and certainly where, obviously, we can support, particularly in things like a sound system, we are doing that. So hopefully, by the first of the year, they'll have a new sound system. We also heard from Gaithersburg High School. So hopefully, they'll have a new sound and, you know, production system by the first of the year. So we're hearing the concerns loud and clear from the community. But I would also say the principals have been doing a fantastic job of advocating for their schools. So a lot of this is already on our radar and things that we're working with to make sure we can get it corrected.
Thank you. I just, yeah, I wanted the community to know that we do really appreciate the situation that those schools find themselves in, so thank you.
Go back to Dr. Daka.
Yeah, my question was about Gaithersburg Middle, and I think you must have said something about HVAC. Yeah, okay. And the mics, you've already taken care of explaining what we're going to do with that. The wellness program at Poolsville, we all know how desperately we need that, because Poolsville is like 16 miles from Gaithersburg, and 13, there's a sign that says 13, to Rockville, and single-lane road all the way. It's really extremely important. I don't know about the wrestling. You'll have to wrestle with that. And I don't, do we fund staff lounges? That was Twinbrook.
So the Twinbrook principal has also done a really good job of highlighting several areas within the school that could use improvement, the staff lounge being one of them. So we are working, obviously, internal as well as external to look for partnerships and things that we can also fund for staff lounge improvements. They do have pretty much a hodgepodge of furniture that's been sort of hand-me-downs over the years, and certainly one that's not representative of how we would certainly want our staff to feel in terms of a staff lounge space. So we are exploring that particular space, as well as, you know, many other areas identified by the principal as needing improvement.
You already talked about the sprinkler at Twinbrook, which is really pretty important, too. But anyhow, thank you for your testimony, everybody.
Ms. Silvestri.
Yeah, Mr. Adams, I wanted to understand the HVAC pipeline funding, because unfortunately, when there's not enough money, HVAC funding gets cut again and again and again, and schools like Gaithersburg Middle School suffer the consequences of that. So I just want to put that out there, that I guess there's not a face associated with that HVAC budget, so it's easier to say, all right, let's cut the HVAC budget rather than reduce the construction on a particular school. But it does have a huge impact on the quality of life of our students, such as this example. So that's the reality that we live in. However, you're saying that Gaithersburg Middle School in particular will have HVAC work done this school year, or are they also in that budget? work done this school year, or are they also in that budget that might get cut later this year in the budget process?
So, Gaithersburg Middle is the perfect example of, you know, the superintendent's made a recommendation to increase funding to $35 million for the HVAC program. If that is funded, we would certainly be able to do all the projects listed in our state request, and they would start design, and then certainly implementation as early as, not necessarily this summer, but the following summer in order to do that. If we do see reductions in that budget, that is when projects start to see delays. Gaithersburg has seen multiple delays, has been on the list as a high priority since 2019, right during the pandemic, but you are correct, the HVAC program has received probably the most significant cuts throughout the CIP process over the past several years, and one that hopefully the board can support, the superintendent's recommendation to really increase that program and really support these schools that are in desperate need of full replacements.
Okay, just wanted to make that clear. We will most likely support that superintendent's increase in HVAC, but then it does go to our funders, and I don't want to throw them under the bus. They are in a very difficult situation, because there is more demand than there is funding, but we need your support there as well, so that these projects can get funded. Thank you.
I just want to say, I think that what Ms. Silvestri is referring to is advocacy at the county council level when they have their budget hearings. Ms. Evans?
Sure, so thank you all for coming out this evening, really appreciate hearing from you. Ms. Hornbeck is really busy, I saw her on Saturday, she came out to the community forum and shared most of what she said today, so just appreciate you. Don't be embarrassed, no, we appreciate it, we want to hear, we want to know, and you were letting us know the many needs of Gaithersburg Middle School, and then our other tireless advocate, Luke Link-Hoing, good to see you as well, and so absolutely, Poolsville is on our mind, and I associate myself with the comments of Mrs. Mandrowski and many of my colleagues about what we've heard today. And then I wanted to just have Mr. Adams, just can you just repeat and share the work that we said that we were going to do around bathrooms for our schools, particularly for the ones that come online? Thank you, Ms. Ross, your hair is growing long and pretty, good to see you. So, I'll let Mr. Adams address the restrooms renovations.
Yes, and another key area that the superintendent has made a recommendation for a significant funding increase within our building modification program improvement, additional $10 million, and that work is to be much more proactive in our inclusive restrooms. Currently, we work with schools that identify a need, and we go out and try to solve individual projects. This program increase would certainly start to be more proactive and start to create these restrooms even when schools are not necessarily asking for them. We are also exploring pilot projects on a variety of our new capital projects that essentially transition away from the group restrooms as identified and create more of open restroom areas that are single-user spaces. We're hoping that that design is one that can cut down on a lot of what we heard from the testimony of challenges within our secondary schools, you know, but we would like to start sharing that with the community and obviously the board, you know, around what those spaces start to look like, and that could be the future of restroom designs at Montgomery County Public Schools.
Thank you. Yeah, it did sadden me to hear the testimony from our students, so I just wanted our community and our students particularly to know what's coming down the pike and the work that has been done and that we will continue to do here in Montgomery County. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other lights, at this time, I'll call Amy Ackerberg-Hastings. Amy Ackerberg-Hastings. Okay, Henri St. Gerard?
Board of Education members, my name is Henri St. Gerard, and I am here to speak on behalf of the Sherwood and Blake Clusters. I am the Northeast Consortium Area Vice President, along with the Sherwood Cluster Coordinator, and I appreciate the time tonight. Speaking for the Sherwood Cluster, I want to first acknowledge the superintendent for the inclusion of the feasibility studies for Belmont Elementary and Sherwood Elementary. Both schools are over 45 years old, and in the case of Belmont, need some, many upgrades, including meeting ADA compliance, and exploring the option for a new building makes a lot of sense, and we thank you. I'd also like to bring some attention to other schools in our cluster. Continuing with Belmont, as we await the feasibility study, the results of that, they're looking for projects to include a new roof for the school, and more pressing need right now is new asphalt for the school bus loop and parking lot, which Belmont hopes can be addressed this upcoming summer. For this, this is almost the fourth year that we're asking for this new asphalt. The school would greatly appreciate it if you could consider this matter. As for Rosa Park Elementary School, they are requesting to be put on the list for HVAC facility system upgrades. This is the school's fourth year making this request, and I ask you as a board to take the immediate action and have the school's HVAC systems examined for upgrades and replacement. These units are over 30 years old, and the school describes severe developing mold on many of the HVAC units. Additionally, the school requests upgrades for their bathrooms, which are experiencing consistent plumbing issues that are not being addressed with quick fixes and maintenance requests. For example, the locker room bathrooms experience persistent clogging issues requiring constant maintenance. Additionally, a consistent sewage smell permeates from the bathrooms in the main office at the seventh-grade hallway, while water pipes make a noticeably loud sound when hot water is turned on. Like the HVAC system, the plumbing unit is almost 30 years old as well, and we request support to fix these current problems and evaluate the situation for long-term solutions. For Sherwood High School, the HVAC system, another persistent problem there going on as well, this is one that's been going on with temperatures going on off and on in different parts of the rooms. The school is requesting that you please evaluate their system as well and look for a solution there. And additionally, they're looking for new floors in the media center and main office. As for the Blake Cluster Schools, they also would like to thank you for the inclusion of a feasibility study for addition to the school. I understand there's been conflicting information on years before as to whether the school needed the feasibility study, but they're very thankful for that moving forward. And along with that, they'd also have several requests that they hope that you pay attention as they await the results of the feasibility study. They request additional outdoor storage units, facilities to adequately safe-keep its performing arts and theatrical, excuse me, production equipment. The current units are at capacity, and the school must find creative ways to store and maintain equipment for the creative programs. I ask the board to consider including resources in the CIP to assist the school with additional outside storage units to alleviate the problem. Finally, in the Blake Cluster, Cloverly Elementary School, their needs center around safety, so I please ask that you consider this a little seriously. First, the school has raised concerns about the process of submitting work orders and the number of contracts, contacts and offices that they must reach out to for facility issues. While the problem is not unique for Cloverly, it is a primary concern for the school due to other work orders that remain outstanding. Cloverly also requests that the school be considered a candidate for a feasibility study, either for an addition or new facility. While a school is not forecasted to exceed capacity over the next five years, the issue with safety is a primary driver behind this. One of the main problems here that we're looking at is a situation due to the rush hour that goes on on Briggs-Cheney Road. The situation is primarily due to inadequacy of the construct of the bus loop. Additionally, the school lacks adequate parking for facility along with security cameras around the facility to provide an extra layer of safety around the premises. A feasibility study will investigate potential long-term solutions for these problems, while any short-term fixes the board can provide to schools, such as security cameras and resources for crossing guards, it would be greatly appreciated. I thank you for the time and the platform to speak to you tonight, I really appreciate it, it's been a crazy day, I just walked in and got cold on, so I thank you again for the time. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next is Nicholas Bassi and Ben Lewis.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Nicholas Bassi, Paint Branch Cluster Coordinator and proud Cloverly Elementary parent. This testimony was crafted in consultation with the Burtonsville, Cloverly, Fairland, Galway, Greencastle, and Page Elementary Schools, Bannaker and Briggs-Cheney Middle Schools, and Paint Branch High School communities. We are proud of our young people and grateful for your support of approximately 7,700 students across our nine schools. Our cluster has one overarching priority for this CIP cycle, ensuring student, staff, and community safety in and around our schools. As you might recall from my last operating budget and CIP testimonies, all of the schools in our cluster have some level of security concerns. At the top of this list is the need for more security cameras at key locations inside and outside our buildings. Multiple schools in our cluster have insufficient coverage, leaving staff without the ability to effectively monitor and mitigate concerns. This is especially true at Fairland Elementary. This lack of camera coverage is compounded by inadequate lighting in our parking lots and activity fields, which is a clear safety concern. Ensuring a safe environment at our high schools is especially timely, given this year's now infamous football brawl, and I again highlight Paint Branch's lack of lighting as an issue, but note that there are similar challenges across the cluster as well. I encourage you to visit our campuses in the early morning or in the evenings to see for yourselves how surprisingly dark it is now earlier as we enter the winter months. Our security concerns also include having adequate facilities and personnel, though we know this is a separate budget, to manage bus and car traffic during peak morning and afternoon hours. This is an issue at each of our schools, but especially acute where the bus loop needs to be redesigned at Bannaker Middle and the traffic backups impacting metro routes at Galway Elementary, and in the acute lack of surface parking at Cloverly and Burtonsville Elementary Schools. We are grateful for the renovation underway at Page Elementary and plan for Greencastle, but ask you not to forget about the stark facilities challenges at Burtonsville Elementary and Bannaker Middle Schools. The age of both facilities creates plumbing, security, space, technology, and numerous other challenges not encountered in other parts of our county despite our recent discussions about equity. I'll close with a final thought. Equity, especially in the CIP, is not about equal distribution of available resources, it's about reallocation based both on historical treatment and present needs. East County has historically been underfunded in relation to our needs, so we ask to work with you to mitigate these inequities by viewing our CIP request through an equity lens. Thank you for your time, attention, and action for the Paint Branch Cluster.
Hi, I'm Benjamin Lewis, also Paint Branch Cluster Coordinator, and I will focus my testimony on three schools and within our cluster that have acute needs. Superintendent's recommended capital budget amendments to the CIP include increased funding for Greencastle Elementary addition and construction of a new Burtonsville Elementary School at a new location. Benjamin Bannaker Middle School also has been approved for a feasibility study for major capital project, but no funding is available for a new school renovation or addition or new construction. We are appreciative that the Greencastle building addition is included in the CIP. Currently, Greencastle has approximately 10 portable classrooms and only four sets of bathrooms for approximately 730 students. These metrics demonstrate the immediate needs of the school, and we request that the CIP be amended to include the superintendent's recommended funding increase so that the project completion date of August 2025 is maintained. The CIP delayed the funding of the addition of Burtonsville Elementary due to budget constraints, but planning funds were allocated to develop design concepts. Over the past decade-plus, infrastructure relief in the form of a new school or building addition for Burtonsville has been denied, delayed, or defunded. The school crisis, the space crisis continues to worsen, which has direct impacts on the students, parents, teachers, and administration. We request that the CIP be amended to include the superintendent's recommended funding of a capital project to construct a new Burtonsville Elementary School, so that the project completion date of August 2027 is maintained. Bannaker was built in 1974 and has not had a major renovation since. The building needs are significant, hot water shortage, building boilers out of service, sewage backups, leaky roof, buckling walls, inoperable access doors, the list goes on and on. The lack of inclusion of any funding for Bannaker in the CIP is startling. We request that the CIP be amended to provide funding for either a major building renovation or the construction of a new Bannaker Middle School. We thank you in advance for your support of the Paint Branch Cluster Schools and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Heinz Weaver-Rink.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. McKnight, I wouldn't forget you. I'm the brand-new cluster coordinator for Springbrook, I've been on the job for at least two months. My goal was originally to go and visit all the schools, so that I get to know what the schools are like. That didn't work out, but we're still going to work on that. So, of the three schools, three out of 11, and in my cluster, I think I have some of the oldest schools in the system. I know because one's older than I am. We have Springbrook, which has consistently been asking for the same thing year after year, and that is replacement of their athletic fields. Now, the athletic director, he wants artificial turf, that's his choice, I'm sure that Mr. Adams' group can figure out exactly what he does need, but what we do know is that the sprinkler system for the existing fields no longer works. And periodically, we're paying about $6,000 a year to Park and Planning to use their fields when the Springbrook fields are too badly torn up or too muddy. So, they are asking for assistance there. The CIP, in the whole approval process, shows Springbrook as getting an HVAC system, and I don't really have to say a whole lot more, other than now they're not getting it, and maybe they will, because we've already discussed that, and Springbrook is in the same stage. They have also asked for some repairs in their auditorium, lighting, stage, and some seat replacement. The lighting has been worked on, the stage has not been done, and the completion date was in September. I'm guessing that is still somewhere in the system. If you go to Charles Drew for a minute, because their request is really short and simple, finish the repairs to the HVAC system, increase the number of security cameras, a new generator, and increase the security cameras. They'd also really like to have some mold remediation fairly quickly. Now, she also asked for a rain garden and some landscaping, I just laughed, because I knew that wasn't going to make it to the list, not this time, because we're all fighting for the same little bit of money. We all know some of us are going to go home with empty pockets. White Oak has a long list of needs. Some of them may or may not be on the CIP or within the CIP criteria, but I'm the messenger, this is what I was asked to present. We've got 14 wheelchair-bound students in this current year. We've got a wheelchair ramp on the outside that looks like a war zone. I'm ambulatory and had trouble going up it. We have kids not able to get through the lunch line. We have kids that can't sit at the standard cafeteria tables, so a table like this is brought in, and they sit sideways. They really use some proper tables to accommodate wheelchairs. They've got a marvelous athletic field that was just done, but can't access it with an We've got rooms downstairs that are being used as classrooms, where we're putting 30 kids in 600 feet with no exterior windows. kids in 600 feet with no exterior windows. And all of these small rooms, most of which are currently being used for storage... Is that my warning to shut up? The good news is I've sent it to you in writing. Thank you.
Thank you. We have your testimony. We'll be sure to finish it. Next up is Shilpa Shah. It's on.
Should I start it again, or the timer?
No, it's...
Okay. Just making sure. All right. Good evening, President Wolf, Board members, Superintendent McKnight, and the MCPS staff members who are here. My name is Shilpa Shah. I am speaking tonight on behalf of Burning Tree Elementary, one of Whitman Cluster Schools. Last year, I spoke with you about our concerns around safety, accessibility, and our aging building. Tonight, you'll be hearing more of the same. Before I begin, I would like to express my gratitude to Mrs. Evans, Dr. Joftis, who's not here, Mr. Adams, and I believe Ms. Shibasaki for visiting our amazing school. As you've seen firsthand, we are doing our best to provide our students with an equitable education despite physical barriers in place due to poor design and aging infrastructure. Our top concern at Burning Tree continues to be that we are severely out of ADA compliance. An ADA assessment performed in 2019 found 47 barriers to accessibility in and around our building. To the best of my knowledge, none of these have been addressed. Our building's split-level structure with no chairlifts continues to prove to be difficult to those with physical limitations, and it's particularly challenging for our Learning Center students and teachers. While we do have an elevator at one end of our building, a student must wheel themselves through multiple classrooms to get to their final destination. Due to the constant classroom disruptions this causes, we've seen teachers physically carry students in wheelchairs and leg braces, which is a hazard to both parties and embarrassing to the student as well. This year, one of our kindergarten students has a medical condition that impacts his mobility. Because he's unable to use the stairs, the teacher can't leave the whole class behind to escort him to the elevator. Every day after recess, the whole class walks around the perimeter of our building to come through our front kindergarten entrance where the ramp is located. We continue to be a proud Learning Center school. Our general education and Learning Center students benefit tremendously from our inclusive approach to learning. Our Learning Center has consistently grown and usually makes up between 15% and 20% of our school's population. Given that there is no plan to add more Learning Centers within MCPS, we expect our center population to continue to grow. Accordingly, we are faced with the challenge of appropriate space. Our classrooms are not ADA compliant, nor are they equipped with the safety measures needed. We also don't have enough classrooms to accommodate both the number of students and the range of needs presented. In fact, some of our Learning Center classrooms, class sizes are larger than our Gen Ed. This presents many challenges to our special education team. Ideally, there would be enough space for small groups, office space for support teams, and a larger sensory room. Instead, we are seeing teachers try their best to administer two separate curriculums in a limited space, which is just not feasible. Another safety concern we would like to highlight is accessibility to our main building from our relocatable classrooms and outdoor space. Students must walk unsupervised around the exterior of the building to use bathrooms in the main building. At the very least, we hope that a camera that we have requested will be installed soon for some peace of mind. Sadly, many of our Learning Center 5th graders who may be ready to join our Gen Ed population aren't able to do so due to the safety concerns of being relocatable. Our school is not fenced in. It borders a public park, and this is a major concern for teachers and parents alike. We've had relocatables in place at Burning Tree for the past 17 years. We've had large trees fall on the side of these temporary classrooms, testing interruptions due to noise levels on the playground, and many other inconveniences. Relocatables were intended as an interim fix. However, our need for classroom space just continues to grow. We're bursting at the seams. We have two temporary classrooms set up in hallways this year, something I'm sure wouldn't pass fire code. Next year, we have a utilization rate of 129%, and a 112-seat deficit. We just need more classrooms in the main building. The last safety concern I'd like to address is the lack of car rider loop. Many of our students come to school as a car or walker. We have 12 buses that utilize our dedicated bus loop. Now, our bus loop is too small to share with cars, and therefore, our car riders get dropped off at one end of the school property and walk across to enter the building. According to the Montgomery County Department of Transportation, we are the only school that does not have two loops. As Mr. Adams was surprised to see, there is only one way in and out of the Burning Tree campus, and that needs to change. We would like to thank you for the installation of our second bottle filler and for the remediation of two drinking water outlets after finding lead levels that exceeded the action levels. We still have 14 additional classroom bubblers and faucets shut off due to high lead levels. Our amazing building services team continues to flush all of our pipes for 30 minutes each morning, and our administrators continue to look for solutions to leaking pipes, excessive humidity levels, and a host of other problems that come with an aging building. In fact, just last month, the fire department had to come out because a water main leak that triggered the fire alarm. 31 years ago, when the late Pat O'Neill was the PTA president, she helped oversee the last renovation of Burning Tree. It's time for us to do it again. I look forward to seeing Seth at school tomorrow, and I thank you for approving our feasibility study. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Kathy Stocker. There you go. You had it. There you go.
I've done this enough, you think of... Good evening, President Wolf, Board of Education members, Dr. McKnight, and MCPS staff. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Kathy Stocker, and along with Beth Van Gelder, I'm one of the BCC Cluster Coordinators. The last time I appeared before this board, we were discussing the Bethesda-Sumerset-Westbrook Boundary Study and discussing which option you all were going to select. The parent and guardian leadership of the three schools worked together, and community members showed up at meetings and responded to surveys and proceeded to select and advocate for Option 4. The board selected Option 1. This was not the option selected by your constituents for a few reasons. One being that we felt that Option 1 was not consistent with the values held by the community, especially with regard to our commitment to equity. Another reason being that we feared that Option 1 was not going to solve our short-term or long-term facility utilization issues at BE. We had strong concerns about the data, especially given that the data was pre-COVID data. We also were very concerned about the projections. PTA leadership looked very carefully at where the BE catchment area, where the growth was occurring, and members also felt that those that had this ground zero view of how the growth was trending and from where the new growth would come was not realized in the option picked. It is the families who are in the BE building itself, the families who live in this neighborhood, who know at the most granular level what is happening in their neighborhood and in their school. So what is the current situation at BE? The projected enrollment per Option 1 was 545. The current enrollment as of last week is 613. We are 1/4 into the school year. Expect the number to continue increasing as the year goes on. If we assume the same percentage projected increase assumed by MCPS projections, projected enrollment for 2023, 2024 is 665 versus the projected 591, and for 2024 to 2025, we are looking at 684 versus the projected 608. We would be over our capacity of 560 by 105 and 124 seats, respectively. You may say that BE was always going to be over capacity no matter what option you picked, but the selection of Option 1 has only exacerbated the discrepancy in our ESOL and FARMs populations across our schools. We now have an 18% FARMs rate and a 21% ESOL rate at BE. During the boundary selection process, a strong value expressed by the constituents in this cluster was to use this opportunity to better balance the demographic characteristics across these three schools. Instead, we are dealing with a decision that has increased and concentrated at BE populations of kids who require many more resources. Not only is BE already over capacity a mere three months after implementation of a new boundary, that overcapacity is disproportionately represented by kids who require more resources and more space. The pace of growth continues to accelerate in downtown Bethesda, and crowding at BE will only get worse. The BE community understood when the long-awaited addition had to be taken off the table. It is time to put it back on. We have tried withdrawing the boundaries, and three months in, only three months in, we are already over capacity. We need to plan and budget for more growth. Ideally, we would add back the previously planned addition at BE. At a minimum, we will need to budget for shorter-term solutions to help us accommodate the growth in enrollment that is a result of the growth in downtown Bethesda. While we can perhaps add more portables, I'm not sure where, we need additional course space to support the increase in students. The gym, cafeteria, and media center cannot accommodate our current numbers, even with our kindergartners eating their lunches in the classroom. I usually end with something funny to say or wrap up a colorful and maybe too-long extended metaphor, but I want to end tonight by expressing my concern and disappointment in the board's dismissal for the collaborative, well-considered, and, as it turns out, prescient input from your constituents. Safe for Mr. Kim and Dr. Joftis, who would have advocated for us if we'd actually had a board member during that consequential process. Every board member here voted for an option that none of the school communities placed among even their top three choices. We expect the MCPS Department of Facilities will always prioritize utilization as they consider the four characteristics during a boundary study. That is their job, and that is their understandable bias. And we know that they are going to rely on MCPS demographers who crunch numbers at a macro level. But they do not necessarily know what is happening street by street and bus stop by bus stop. So we rely on you to consider our values as a community and to listen to us when we tell you what is happening on the ground. You have extremely well-informed, hardworking, thoughtful, and collaborative parent leadership in this cluster and throughout this county. We wish to work with you. It is better for you, it's better for us, and more importantly, it's better for our kids when we all work together. Thank you for your service to our kids and their families.
Thank you. Next is Laura Stewart.
Good evening, President Wolf, BOE members, and Dr. McKnight. I am here again. My name is Laura Stewart, and I'm here as the Down County Cluster Area VP, an Einstein High School parent, and I'm now representing the Einstein Cluster today. I would like to first address our high school needs. Einstein High School now has 11 portable classrooms. We're projected to have up to 100 more students in the CIP. It is imperative that the Northwood and Woodward projects do not slip beyond their new completion date of 2026. We look forward to a solution to our overcrowded situation, but we also desire an equal voice in the way this solution is implemented. Outreach on boundary or programming solutions must be done early and often in multiple languages. I just want to let you all know what I hear from the community, and that is the feeling that Einstein High School population is not always being treated equitably. The situation with the math teacher has added to this view, and it is consistent, I hear it all the time, that things that would happen in other parts of the county wouldn't happen because of where of the resources available to those parents versus in Down County and especially the Einstein population. So I suggest that we start with a meeting with the Einstein community before any official boundary discussions begin, with an opportunity for feedback as to how the community would like to engage and for them to offer their viewpoints on possible solutions as to how the new Woodward High School might be populated. The Woodland Elementary School community was disappointed by the six-month delay in the opening of the school, but understands the reasoning behind that delay. Maybe this will allow for more planning for safe routes to school. According to the WXY analysis, Woodland is populated by students that live near to the school. Being a school nestled in a somewhat dense neighborhood, yet 90% of the children have historically been bused because of hazards. Many parents would like to see a more walkable school, possibly including another crossing guard, to help facilitate the children who live very close to the school to get to school, but must be bused because of unsafe conditions. We understand that walkable schools must include other agencies, and the community is committed to engaging with multiple partners. Newport Mill Middle School needs to be part of the safe routes to school effort as well. There was a bicyclist that was injured recently. It was caused by a car near the school. We need to actively work with other agencies again to implement Vision Zero strategies before we lose another child to traffic violence. Oakland Terrace Elementary School was built in 1950 and renovated in the 90s, and it is now a school with projections reflecting a somewhat significant deficit of seats, up to 150, and the key facility indicators show issues with the HVAC system. The feasibility study is recommended in the CIP, and they should be considered in the next full CIP. Many Einstein Cluster schools have asked for more filtered water bottle filling stations, especially nearby classrooms that include younger populations, because those in-class water fountains many times test above the level for lead. We also need to do a better job of communicating to students that they should not fill their water bottles in the bathrooms because the water is not tested there. We all, we need to let more kids know that they should not go in the bathroom to fill the water bottles. We look forward to more engagement with the Planning Department as we work towards our future in the DCC. And again, we'll see you early and often on those boundary studies. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll take questions from my board members. Please turn your light on if you have questions. I have one for Mr. Adams. I know we've talked about the cameras, safety concerns. Can you just give a couple of sentences about where we are on that?
Yes, and again, that's another initiative that Dr. McKnight has put forward is additional funding in the area of security cameras, but also security infrastructure. So that is part of the superintendent's recommendation. But yes, one of the goals the superintendent has laid out is to obviously look at our camera program, expand it where obviously possible, but also to expand some of the other key security infrastructure that we are exploring that certainly will take our schools to the next level of enhancements as it relates to safety and security in and outside buildings.
Thank you. And we heard a number of routine maintenance issues raised. I'm not even going to try to recall them all, but I'm sure that you heard them. I know I heard Rosa Parks, I heard Summit-Burning Tree, any number of schools, Sherwood, of course, Cloverly, my heart. So I know that you heard them, and we'll take a look at them and get back to us on that, okay? Ms. Madrowski?
Yeah. And follow-up with the cameras, is there some sort of timeline on that? Because it comes up all the time.
Good evening, and thank you for the parents who highlighted the questions around the cameras, especially at the elementary schools. One of the key things that we looked at this year is we know we have some of our schools who don't have cameras at the elementary level, and there are some schools who have a limited number of cameras. We are working this year, so by the end of this school year, all of our elementary schools will be outfitted with cameras. We're doing it in three phases, so we're taking groups of schools. We're looking at ones that have anywhere between one to five cameras, and we are increasing the number of cameras at the elementary level so that they have enough so that they will be able to have surveillance around their entire buildings.
That is good to know. My last thing that I'm going to specify is if you could speak to the ADA issues that have come up. I mean, no teacher should be having to carry students around. Some of them obviously seem much more extensive than others, and I know that you all had gone out to do an evaluation of those schools and things like that, but if you could just speak to where we are with this, because these are pretty urgent, in my opinion, issues.
Yes, that's a great question, and certainly, this is predominantly one of the issues we heard was at Burning Tree Elementary. Burning Tree does have a regional Learning Center program that certainly many of the students do have mobility challenges. From that facility perspective, it's certainly one that is probably more challenged than most of our facilities in terms of access and accessibility in and around that building. So we've originally looked at that building from a perspective of... So we've originally looked at that building from a perspective of an addition. Really, the realistic way to solve that would be an addition project, but at the same time, we did include it into the major capital project realm, because certainly to invest in a major addition at that facility may not solve some of the other challenges that were also identified, meaning site challenges, bus loop, bus access. So we are going to work with the school to obviously develop as many of the immediate solutions that we can, but I do believe in the next CIP you will see certainly more plans for a greater robust project at that facility to accommodate some of the ADA challenges identified.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Could I just follow up on one of Ms. Madrowski's points? At White Oak, can you have somebody look at the wheelchair ramp?
Yes.
Out there specifically?
Absolutely, yes.
And I don't know what we could do about lunch tables, but I do think that that is an issue that we really should take a look at and see if we can address, because the wheelchairs should be able to eat lunch the way the other kids can.
All of these issues, I think, need to be addressed.
Absolutely. Ms. Harris?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to echo those comments on White Oak. And I guess, to me, I sat here thinking, looking at the challenges of Burning Tree, wondering if we need to sort of do a deeper dive into how we decide to put programs in specific schools, because clearly the school is not set up to host the program that we put there. And so, why, why are we here? But I did hear a lot of, from I think almost every cluster, mention concerns about pedestrian safety, external lighting making, and, you know, this time of year, students are coming and going when it's dark, both early and later in the day. And so I know you've been keeping track of all of these things, but I think it is really important that we do focus on not only what happens once kids are in our buildings, but how they're getting to and from, and making sure we're doing everything that we can, and then working with our external partners to make sure they have a safe way to get there. You know, the pavement is level, and the lighting is adequate, and a lot of these schools are also asking for perhaps crossing guard support for some of these more challenged, especially elementary schools, which that's not really a capital project need, but I know this is something that you, we have been talking about a lot, so it almost seems like this is a subset of challenges that we need to focus on directly, just the pedestrian safety issues around our buildings. And that's it for me, although I have to say, I was just sitting here flipping through my book again, and I was surprised I had not noticed how overcapacity Einstein is, and, you know, I was an Einstein parent, so I am, that is a, as Ms. Stewart alluded, that is one of our schools that's kind of nestled in a neighborhood, and that brings with it challenges. So, anyway, thank you for all of this, thank you for keeping track of all of these projects, big and small, and it seems like we also, we need to have a issue, a meeting focused solely on safety issues in these schools.
Ms. Silvestri?
Mr. Adams, we, I think you've heard that we all, we think all these issues are important, so could you just share with us how you manage what you hear at these meetings? I don't, I'm not going to go through, you know, this person said this, and this person said that, but just for the benefit of our audience, what do you do with this information? How do you process what you hear tonight?
And that's a great question, and one that is multifaceted. So this process starts with cluster comments, you know, there's an opportunity for, you know, PTAs, clusters to work with schools and develop comments, so that is the first step in terms of hearing some feedback or challenges at schools. Based on that, we do update and report back to each school around what the results of are of that process. When we get into the CRP hearings, public hearings, we also document, similar to the cluster comments, you know, the concerns that were raised, you know, many of which we hear sometimes are maintenance, so we do obviously track those and follow up with the individual school. We work with the school if there are challenges around work orders, or supplies, or operations. Some of the major capital issues that we do, again, start to work with communities to identify timelines, really outline, you know, what is involved with the project. I think sometimes there's a thought that some of these projects are just quick fixes, and unfortunately, some things do take time, they do take engineering, architecture, evaluation, and design aspects, so we just start to walk through that process with the communities and the school leadership, just to set the expectations for, you know, when we may be able to address that. And also, most importantly, really identify if funding is available, and if there's additional advocacy that we can partner with, and look for ways to support through, in discussions with the county executive and county council. So there's a variety of different ways, but we will be following up with every school that has testified, work starting with the school administration, and then certainly working out beyond that to work with parents and community members and students.
Dr. Daka?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that today at Fiscal Committee, which you can see, it's, you can see it, it's been videotaped, but our able chairperson, Lynn Harris, handled this really well, and Mr. Adams was certainly there with Ms. Karamihas. And I just wanted to let you know, and I hope that I'm explaining this correctly, but the state only allocates based on the numbers of students we have. They don't have anything to do with the programs that we have, and if we need to reduce the size of classes, we need more teaching spaces, spaces. Or if we have a special program, like infants and toddlers or paps, you have, and I talked about this earlier today, you have four to five children in one classroom, and that's it, so it looks like you have more space, and that you can fill it up with other students. And what this does is that staff has to figure out how to stretch the funds that come from the county council and come from the state to meet all of our needs. And just so you know, and I think Ms. Silvestri started to speak about this, how concerned we are with the requests that you bring and the things that you're describing, and we may look like we're not listening or we're stone-faced about it, but that's not true. This is very, it's very disturbing, and we leave these meetings, they're very serious to us, but thank you very much for bringing this forward, and please take a look at the fiscal management part. It's at the end of the meeting when Mr. Adams talks about how we have to do the funding for schools.
Ms. Harris?
Yeah, I just, thought came into my head, and I just wanted to give a shout-out to that Burning Tree Elementary School teacher Ms. Shaw mentioned, with the student who has a wheelchair and can only access the building through the front, and so instead of setting that student apart, they all go, and that's, that's kind of, you know, I think what we hope happens in our classrooms is each classroom's a community, and so I think all of those students are learning a lesson.
I think we heard a number of comments about the bus loops, the parent pickup lanes, and I know over in our area, there are a lot of schools that are on those one-lane streets. I don't think that there's much we can do about it, because we don't own the land next to it, but can you speak to that?
So, yes, we do have a safe access program that does evaluate schools from parking lot improvements, pedestrian safety improvements. You know, you are correct, there are sometimes limitations based on where the building is located, you know, we heard from Wooton students, you know, some of those previous decisions make it difficult to make major improvements, but I can also say, we have been partnering with Montgomery County Transportation, Montgomery County planners around Vision Zero and ways to really focus and join efforts with multi-agencies to see if there's ways to make improvements in and around school sites. I know the Planning Office has done an evaluation of everything from bicycle access safety to pedestrian safety, and they are also focusing in on key areas of the county that can benefit, greatly benefit from improvement. So while sometimes there's limitations to what we can do on our site, you know, I am hopeful that, you know, these new partnerships will lead to, you know, greater improvements throughout our communities.
I think the reality is where some of our schools sit, there's just no changing it at this point, short of, you know, tearing it down and starting all over. So I just wanted you to give them an idea that we do hear you, but we can't always make changes that easily.
Ms. Wolf, if I may, I do want to say I appreciate our families coming out and sharing that Burtonsville example was a perfect example of when we connected with the county specifically to talk about how, quite frankly, some neglect from the state over time, in terms of things that prevented the access to the school, limited us in ways, and so we did find some value in working with them to try to make sure if there was something that we needed to do at the state level for advocacy, how that would complement the opportunity for MCPS. So we will continue to do that as we continue to hear these examples, to figure out what communities we need to work with, so I want to thank you all so much for bringing these examples forward, because sometimes we may have to work or need to work with others to do it, and sometimes it's about a push that you can have from several different directions to get folks' attention about what needs to happen, so, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to call Kim Glassman. No, actually, she's on video. Please play the video.
Good evening, Dr. McKnight and members of the board. My name is Kim Glassman, and I, along with Irene Johnson and April Jones, proudly serve as McGruder Cluster Coordinators. We appreciate your time as we give you testimony this evening regarding capital projects for the McGruder Cluster. Our cluster is home to more than 5,300 students across nine schools, and we are grateful to have several facilities on the current capital projects list. We would like to ensure that the previously approved projects remain on target to the best of the board's ability. While McGruder is now scheduled to have a new build in 2029, we ask the board to continue to maintain McGruder in good repair until that construction is complete. In addition, we have several other requests to keep our schools safe and accessible for all students. All of our schools who do not yet have gender-inclusive restrooms ask that one be added. All of our schools without sufficient security cameras ask that they be added. Our school-specific requests are: For McGruder High School, we are slated for a major capital improvement to be completed in August 2029. We also ask that the board advocates to maintain this current construction timeline with the county council as needed. This has already been delayed for two years. McGruder has maintenance and safety needs that should be addressed as soon as possible rather than waiting for the 2029 capital improvement to be completed. These requests are: Exterior lights, we need new lighting in the staff and student parking areas. These areas are very dark during evening events and present dangerous opportunities for unwanted activities and are a safety risk. Stadium steps, McGruder needs improvement to the visitor-side stands. The path to the stands is steep and hazardous. We request an additional set of stairs be added with handrails to provide a safe point of entry. Cameras, we are requesting additional security cameras. We have little coverage for our stadium field and the backside of the building. The upper soccer field and softball field and other locations are not adequately covered with our current devices. We do not have a camera facing the front of the building. Our auditorium lighting needs to be upgraded and replaced. The hall lockers are broken and falling apart and need to be replaced. The restrooms are in need of renovations to maintain proper repair until the capital improvement project is complete. The girls locker room is in poor shape and needs to be renovated to maintain proper repair. The roof leaks in several areas and needs to be repaired until construction is complete. Shady Grove Middle School, we are grateful that the updates to the outdoor track are planned. We ask this repair go-forward as scheduled without further delay, as the current track has many broken areas, bumps, and divots that are often the cause of injuries for our students. We continue to request an upgrade to our gym floor. Redland Middle School, we again request that the electrical lighting on our stage be replaced. This is our third year with this request. The electrical lighting in dimmer rack is condemned. The system is very old, original from 1971, and needs a total replacement. We appreciate that there are plans underway and ask that this be continued as planned. We also request a replacement of the tile floor in the media center and the main office. Our carpet is more than 15 years old and needs to be replaced. Candlewood Elementary requests the addition of security cameras for the exterior and interior of our building. Flower Hill Elementary School, many of our bathrooms are old and not ADA compliant. The district has attempted to address this, but the project has been delayed three years in a row. We are requesting this move forward without further delay. We also request fencing between the portables outside the school and the adjacent neighborhood to maintain student safety. We request security cameras on the interior and exterior of the building, including in the area between portable classrooms and surrounding housing. Lastly, we are in need of an additional portable classroom. Our interior classrooms are all in use, and we need additional space for student support and intervention. Mill Creek Town Elementary, we continue to request a replacement of the HVAC system. The current system leaks throughout the building, and a new system is needed for improved air quality and safety. Cashell Elementary School, for the second year, requests a sidewalk walk along the backside of the building to make a passable space for students in wheelchairs. We also request a gender-inclusive bathroom and a wooden sign in front of our school building to be repaired or replaced. Resnick Elementary School requests the addition of security cameras to the exterior and interior of our building. And lastly, Sequoia Elementary School wishes to thank MCPS and the Board of Education for completing our previously requested items. Thank you for your time. The McGruder Cluster looks forward to working with you and building a stronger and safer future for our students. We hope we can continue to see improvements to our schools and see these funds in the upcoming year.
Next is Elizabeth Heitzler, Jack Devon, Yacy Ramirez, Leah Jordanos, Harper Simmons, and Leander Uvari. Please play the video.
My name is Harper Simmons, and I am a fifth-grade student at Woodfield Elementary School. Woodfield was built in 1962 and has had no significant improvement since 1985. Our learning environments are outdated, and our school received red-zone scoring and the MCPS key facility indicator for infrastructure, including roofing, electrical, and plumbing. These red-zone scores mean that conditions at my school are nearing the end of their anticipated lifespan. On behalf of all the students at my school, as well as future students, I urge the Board of Education to support a feasibility study for Woodfield Elementary School to determine the best way to fix these conditions and improve our learning environment. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Heitzler, and I'm a fifth-grade student at Damascus Elementary School. Did you know that Damascus Elementary School was built in 1934 and is one of the oldest elementary schools in Montgomery County? A revitalization expansion project was developed for my school, but this project was never prioritized or approved despite Damascus Elementary School being the second oldest elementary school in Montgomery County. Thank you to the Superintendent and the Board of Education for including funds for a feasibility study to be conducted for Damascus Elementary School. We urge MCPS to prioritize Damascus Elementary School as a major capital project. My community has requested movement on this project for many years, only to see projects from the other clusters prioritized over this one.
Damascus High School was built in 1950 and was last renovated over 40 years ago in 1978. Damascus is now the oldest upper-level building in the MCPS school system. It is critical that the Damascus High School major capital project stays on track and is one of the most urgent need in our cluster.
Damascus High School received red-zone end-of-life span ratings for interior finishes, plumbing, electrical, equipment, and elevators in the MCPS school facilities assessment. The outdated narrow stairwells in our school create dangerous choke points for students and staff as they move throughout the building during school day. These choke points could prove especially dangerous in an evacuation.
Students in Damascus High School community deserves 21st-century learning environment that is safe, supports student achievement, and builds our community. We are excited to see that design for Damascus High School is set to begin, and we thank the board for including this project in CIP. We continue to repress your support to ensure our project remains a top priority and moves forward as scheduled. On behalf of Damascus High School, we thank you.
Next is Bridget Howe. Please play the video.
Hello, I'm Bridget Howe from the Northwood Cluster. As part of the DCC, the Northwood Cluster recognizes that our needs are synergistic with the rest of the DCC. Additionally, we also know there are dire needs across the system, and we believe that compromise between clusters is possible if we look holistically at what our kids need. First, we thank you for getting the construction of Odessa Shannon Middle School across the finish line. While there's still work to be done with the old facility and athletic fields, every day, kids from the Northwood and Kennedy Clusters get to walk through the doors of a beautiful facility that is everything our community deserves. We're grateful. Second, please ensure that the scope for Silver Spring International Middle School be reexpanded. The shortfalls of the Sims Building are longstanding, and even though enrollment projections may have dropped beyond the point where an addition is required, the facility needs help. There are dozens of ADA violations, and the narrow stairwells, like stairwell number seven, are hazards for students and make transitions between class difficult. Additionally, many Additionally, many classrooms lack adequate daylighting, and parking has been an ongoing issue. Third, while the community understands the pressures that resulted in the one-year delay to Northwood construction, it's imperative that there be no further delay. Also, the University Boulevard corridor plan has just begun at Parks and Planning, and both Northwood and Blair are important anchors of the corridor. Parks and Planning is emphasizing traffic safety and Vision Zero principles in this plan. While design work has been done for the new Northwood, there is an opportunity to use this project to ensure that Northwood is part of a complete street anchored to the community, focusing in on safe access by foot, bicycle and public transit, as well as by school bus or car. MCPS should be part of this solution. Finally, as we look at all school construction in the county, not just in our cluster, creating better pedestrian and bike access to our schools will pay out in dividends for student and community, health and safety, and as climate-friendly policy. The schools we renovate and build today will be housing students and teachers decades into the future. We should build for that as much as possible. Thank you.
Next is Ariel Garner, please play the video.
Thank you for the opportunity to advocate for funding to improve Benjamin Banneker Middle School. The Banneker PTSD is submitting this request on behalf of the 700-plus children attending Banneker. Banneker was built in 1974, and according to the 2018 School Facilities Assessment, it is unknown if or when the school has had a renovation. In that same report, Banneker was in the red for infrastructure and nearing red for indoor environment. It is very concerning that given the age of the school, no documented renovation, and the 2018 School Facilities Assessment, Banneker has yet to receive a feasibility study. Our request is that the board prioritizes a feasibility study for Banneker, and that Banneker be added to the capital project plan for a completely new facility. Banneker's program capacity is 799, and we are expected to exceed that in the 2023-2024 school year. Therefore, our timeline is short and our need is immediate. Banneker is also in need of an updated security system. Just last week, a family sent desperate pleas for help locating their eighth-grade child who left the school grounds during school hours. Thankfully, the child was located. However, are we going to wait for another more serious incident to occur before we address the lack of security at our school? I've been a part of the MCPS family for six years, and I have provided testimony on behalf of the Paint Branch Cluster since my child was in elementary school. Unfortunately, I have not seen the issues that Banneker addressed by the board in the last six years, and I feel that our needs are being ignored and resources are not distributed equitably within our county. Our kids are at an extreme disadvantage, and I respectfully ask that the board prioritize the needs of Banneker. Thank you again for your time and your consideration. Sincerely, Ariel Garner, Banneker PTSD Secretary.
Next is Walea Chase, please play the video.
Good evening, President Wolf, Dr. McKnight, Board of Education members, and MCPS. Thank you for listening to my testimony this evening about the CIP needs of my children's school. My name is Walea Chase. I stand before you this evening representing my family of six, my husband and our four children, as a proud Gaithersburg Middle School mom. I am also the PTA Vice President and the NAACP Parent Council Rep. Because my time is limited, I'll get right to it. Our school, Gaithersburg Middle School, needs your help and would love to be a priority in your capital improvement plan budget. You heard from one of our awesome cluster reps, Ms. Carrie Promozic, just last week. She testified about six years, six years, that our Gaithersburg Middle School cluster has been considered for a new HVAC system. At the risk of dating myself, GMS can be likened to Susan Lucci, who was constantly and consistently nominated for a Daytime Emmy for her work on All My Children, but never won. GMS wants to win. We want to be warm and cold, but at the appropriate times. As Carrie mentioned during her testimony, and I quote, "GMS kids are cold and hot and need a properly functioning HVAC system to keep their great brains comfortable and ready to learn," end quote. That tickled me, but it's also very serious. The superintendent's amendment of $10 million to address the backlog of heating ventilation and air conditioning projects is a high priority. Please put GMS on the list for real this time and throw some of those funds our way. Gaithersburg Middle School's stage lighting and sound need to be replaced and upgraded in the auditorium and gymnasium as well. What we have isn't functional, it doesn't work. It's not like we have something that can just be fixed. We have nothing, it doesn't work. Having this would support all choral and band programs, school plays, general school events, and a new theater class. Show our students that they count too. We shouldn't have to be in a certain area of this county to have some of the same amenities that some of the other schools in our county are afforded. We shouldn't have to fundraise to have base-level CIP supports for Gaithersburg Middle School and our Gaithersburg Cluster as a whole. Perception matters, as you all know, and the perception of our families is that we don't matter, because our school community doesn't have the means to raise funds to improve our school building. But is that even our role and responsibility? I will end by thanking you in advance for a new HVAC system, as well as lighting and sound being replaced and upgraded in our auditorium and gymnasium. I'm old-school, and I call things that are not as though they are, but I pray, and as I wish them to be. Don't let us down, we're counting on you. Thank you for your time and your attention this evening.
That concludes our testimonies. At this time, I'll take comments from my fellow board members. Dr. Daka?
Oh yeah, I had a note on this before, but I didn't mention it. Banneker, the sewage backup sounds pretty serious, so please take a look at that.
Am I seeing any other lights? Okay, I'm not. I want to thank everyone for taking your time to come out this evening. Know that we hear you, and we are always here to hear what your concerns are. Thank you again for coming out.